Good evening. This, the 58th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Elder Tobias McCain of Rehoboth Ministries Church of God in Christ located in the community of Park Heights.
Shall we pray? Our Father and our God, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for this great city in which you have allowed us and blessed us to be residents of. In this divine hour, Lord, our prayer is that you will look on the affairs of the city council, look on our mayor as he strives to lead us. We declare in your word that the steps of a good man are ordered by you. We pray that you would bless in this every endeavor. Look on our city council, our city council president, as she moves in your power and your might, all of the districts that are represented. The land, the soil, and all of us belong to you. We ask this prayer, in your matchless, majestic, and marvelous name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Of the United States of America, to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And before we do the showcase, I think it would be good to do a round of applause for Michael Huber because he has been sitting in for the person that usually does this, which is recuperating right now. So let's give Michael a round of applause. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by Edwin Perez of the Baltimore City College Tech Knights Club.
Hello, everyone. Counsel, thank you for having us. We are the Tech Knights, the Baltimore City College's video game club. I'm Cabaselli.
I'm Eric Patterson.
I'm Youssef Maroud.
And I'm Kayvon Jenas.
At our club, within our school, we advocate for the learning and education potentials within video game. Some of the things that we have done has, within our club, made a board game to emulate game designing within our members. And there are various opportunities that video game has provided. For example, esports or electronic sports, which is professional video game playing, is provided to over thirty different colleges and universities across America and offers up to nineteen thousand dollars in scholarships. Also, the University of Baltimore here offers a game design course where you can take your love of video gaming further. Video game provides various skills such as leadership, creativity, and many more. So, and also, video game is not just playing video games, it is also furthering yourself in technology.
As the Baltimore City College Tech Knights, we not only advocate for video games, but we advocate for education. Education is one of our top priorities, and we want everybody, include, well, everybody meaning Baltimore City Schools, Baltimore City School System, to have access and equity to all technology. And as technology evolves, the world evolves, we want our youth, the Baltimore, the youth of Baltimore, to have equal opportunity to expand and evolve with it. As you can see, companies like Google that are centered in California, we don't have, we don't have the technology corporations like California does, but we look to expand right here in Baltimore, a hub for the youth to recognize their talents.
One of the main ways we will be doing this is using STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. That'll be, that'll be one of our main priorities to further push the idea of education STEAM working. One of our main priorities and ideas is to, is to install STEAM-only classes or STEAM rooms where Baltimore's youth will be taught STEAM-related opportunities such as how math is used in engineering, so you could be taught about how video games connect within that, show further opportunity. Also, another, also, our main audience, as stated previously, is the Baltimore youth as STEAM is not, STEAM is not an explored, STEAM is not an explored concept within Baltimore City Schools, as there are only a few schools such as Edmensen that only, that have a real STEAM program. Also, a further way to expand this would be further funding and investment from the city to further show opportunity with, to further show the opportunities of STEAM and to further explore the idea for our youth.
Some of our future projects, working on a bill on the STEM curriculum, another is for our, a project within our club. Making a video game, it will go into the coding, dive deep into the coding aspect of technology and video games. Another project that we are working on within the club is something at NightCon is like a convention at our school on, on, on the bill. And I would like to thank you all for your time. If you would like to contact us, our email is bcctechknights@baltimorecitycollege.us. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tech Knights Club. You keep doing those wonderful things that you're doing, and the chair recognizes Counselwoman Clark.
I rise, Madam President.
Use your, you have to use your microphone.
I rise, Madam President, to say, "City forever."
(laughter)
And, and we know now some reasons why it will be forever and will lead us into the future. While I'm on my feet, Madam President, if I may, if you will give me the privilege, I'd like to acknowledge the presence with us here tonight of the new police commissioners, well, he's not new anymore, of the Police Commissioners Chief of Staff, and that is Eric Mellingson.
Eric?
He left!
Okay.
Okay, he was here. So we've been, we've been, we've been investigated and passed muster, and I'm sure that he'll come back someday when he can spend some time.
Thank you for-
Because this is going to be a very interesting meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for recognizing him. It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. So moved by Councilman Reisinger, second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of journalizing the invocation, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Madam President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the April 22nd City Council Meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the ex officio mayor. Bill signed by the ex officio mayor can be found on pages two and three of the agenda. And now, bills to be introduced.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 190379, Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates, for the purpose of authorizing the city council to amend the ordinance of estimates to increase items of appropriation or add items for new purposes, subject to certain limitations, deleting the requirement that supplementary appropriations be recommended by the Board of Estimates, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors: Henry, Dorsey, Cohen, Reisinger, Clark, Costello, President Middleton, Stokes, Bullock, Pinkett, Schleifer, Sneed.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 190380, Charter Amendment Veto's, for the purpose of modifying the vote by which the council may override a mayoral veto, repealing the mayoral authority to veto items of appropriation, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors: Henry, Dorsey, Cohen, Reisinger, Clark, President Middleton, Sneed, Burnett, Bullock.
We'd like to add, Councilman Scott. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to speak to both 19-0379 and 19-0380, keeping in mind that they were previously 12-0111 and 12-0113. Both of these charter amendments had previous lives in the last council, and I am looking forward to the reprieves with a newer and council that is hopefully more appreciative of at least one of them, and hopefully a mayor who is appreciative of both. These, these charter amendments, as I have said previously, are not about eliminating the strong mayor system of government. What they are about is creating a better balance of power between that strong mayor and the city council. Because if you look around the country, at other cities, our size, our complexity, you will see not one single municipality in which the council has to get three-quarters of its body to override a mayoral veto. And when I go to groups of other municipal officials from around the country, and they hear that in our council, we can't add money in the budget, but we can only subtract, they are often somewhere between surprised and horrified at how that would affect budget negotiations with the mayor. I look forward to a lengthy public conversation about both of these, and I thank my co-sponsors.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 190381, Charter Amendment Removal of Elected Officials, for the purpose of providing for the removal from office by the city council of certain elected officials under certain circumstances, expanding the potential individuals or entities entitled to prefer charges for consideration of removal from office, conforming and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors: Burnett, Henry, Pinkett, Clark, Scott, President Middleton, Costello, Bullock, Cohen, Dorsey, Schleifer, Stokes, Sneed, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President, and to my colleagues for unanimous co-sponsorship of this bill. This, this is not about the current situation, but it's about a rebalancing of power in city government. The, this body is the legislative branch, and we should have all the tools necessary to hold the executive branch, the administration accountable. This, this bill seeks to expand on already existing powers that this council has to remove our colleagues, to, if there is will for neglect or a commitment of a crime or an inability to do the job, and this is expanding those powers to include the mayor's office. It also will be a part of a series of other, not only public conversations about this, but a separate ordinance to come if should the voters choose to adopt this, to really build out what this process should look like. But I want to be clear that this has not been taken lightly. I know by myself and none of anyone in this body, and this is something that we hope we never have to use, because the idea is that we move forward as a city that is more transparent and accountable to the voters of Baltimore City, and, and one that instills pride. And so, we are, we are in very difficult times right now, and I look forward to continued conversation by my colleagues on this and the public on this, and, and thank you again for the opportunity to share. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 190382, Charter Amendment City Administrator, for the purpose of establishing the position of city administrator as the chief administrative officer of Baltimore City, establishing how the city administrator is appointed and removed, establishing the powers and duties of the city administrator, establishing that the city administrator shall appoint a deputy city administrator and certain other staff, providing that the city administrator may appoint and remove certain municipal officials, clarifying and conforming related provisions generally relating to the position of the city administrator, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors: Scott, Dorsey, Bullock, Henry, Sneed, Schleifer, Cohen, Burnett.
The chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the council, the city of Baltimore is essentially a three-billion-dollar business, and you will not find a three-billion-dollar business where the chief executive and the chief administrator is the same person. In fact, if you look just to our surrounding jurisdiction and to most cities across the country, the offices of the chief executive and the chief administrator are separated. We know just recently County Executive Johnny O'Sheekley Jr. poached into the city and took our Director of Social Services out to Baltimore County to be their chief administrative officer. Baltimore as a city fate with facing serious challenges. We can no longer afford to have our mayor, no matter whom it is, to be worried about both the high-level executive and the day-to-day minutia of city government. We have to join the rest of the world and cities across the country in separating those duties, allowing us to have a professional to come in and run the day-to-day operations of the city, allowing the mayor to focus in on the things that we all want ourselves and the mayor to be focused on. Reducing crime, making sure that our public schools are improving, attracting businesses, attracting residents, maintaining businesses and maintaining residents into the city of Baltimore. Baltimore has not adjusted like many governments across the country. We have to start operating our city more efficiently, and we can only have a high-functioning, efficiently ran government if it's done by professionals. Thank you to my co-sponsors.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill 190383, City Streets Closing Bowers Schmidt Alley and, and two ten-foot alleys bounded by North Gay Street, East Oliver Street, North Washington Street, and Federal Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing Bowers Schmidt Alley and two ten-foot alleys bounded by North Gay Street, East Oliver Street, North Washington Street, and Federal Street, as shown on plat 309A, 29A, in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 190384, Resoning 3302 Edgewood Street, AKA 3500 West Forest Park Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3302 Edgewood Street, AKA 3500 West Forest Park Avenue, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, from the R1 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. Sponsor, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190385, Gender-Inclusive Single-User Restrooms, for the purpose of requiring that certain single-user restrooms in Baltimore City be made available to all individuals regardless of gender, requiring that certain single-user restrooms use gender-inclusive signage to identify the restroom, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Cohen, President Middleton, Dorsey, Stokes, Henry, Burnett, Bullock, Sneed, Clark.
This has been assigned to the, the chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. A few months ago, the city council passed a resolution in support of City Schools Policy JBB, which enacts important protections for transgender and gender non-binary students. That policy was passed by the School Board of Commissioners this month. When we introduced that resolution, we said that we would not ask Baltimore City Schools to do something that we didn't do ourselves as a city. This bill, making all publicly accessible single occupancy restrooms in the city of Baltimore gender-inclusive, is one step toward fulfilling that commitment. This bill is fundamentally about inclusivity and ensuring access to public accommodation for all of our residents, including youth and kids. We know there are members of our community, including our trans and non-binary neighbors, who may not feel comfortable using a restroom with a male or female labor label. As a city, we should strive to create public accommodations that are accessible and welcoming for all of our communities. This bill also normalizes the idea that any member of our community, regardless of their gender identity, can use publicly accessible single occupancy restrooms in our city. I want to thank members of the mayor's LGBTQ Commission liaison Jabari Lyles, and members of the commission, including Alen Jalakure, Kimberly Mooney, Akil Patterson, and several others, and I look forward to conversations moving forward on this bill.
Thank you. Note to add, Councilman Ed Reisinger, this has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 190153R, in support of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund and Educational Fund and ACLU of Maryland lawsuit against the Maryland State Board of Education. For the purpose of supporting the NAACP Legal Defense Fund and Educational Fund and the ACLU of Maryland reopening of the lawsuit regarding inadequate state funding for Baltimore City Schools. Sponsor, Henry, Dorsey, Cohen, Reisinger, Clark, President Middleton, Pinkett, Sneed, Schleifer, Burnett, Bullock.
The chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. For a number of years, I have been skeptical of the General Assembly ever properly funding Baltimore City Schools. I have long thought that while it would be good and it would be right, it was unlikely that delegates and senators from faraway parts of the state were ever going to vote to properly send state resources to Baltimore City to educate our kids, even though it is the Maryland State Constitution which inscribes the access to equality education as a right for every single child in the state of Maryland. And as such, I have, I was happy a number of years ago when the ACLU and the NAACP's Legal Defense and Educational Fund took up the cause and filed suit against the state. And over the last roughly seventeen years, Baltimore City has enjoyed an additional two billion dollars in funding due to a change in funding formula brought about by that lawsuit. But it has become clear, as we have seen the results of the Kerwin Commission and the lack of, I'm going to say, sufficient progress, it has become clear that we need to go back to the court in order to make certain that Baltimore City school kids are getting every bit of support that they deserve. And so, this resolution puts the Baltimore City Council on record, saying that we support the ACLU and the NAACP's Legal Defense and Education Fund in their efforts. I want to thank my co-sponsors, and I want to move to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Cohen, all those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries, the rules are suspended.
Thank you, Madam President. I move this resolution favorably.
Second by Councilman Dorsey, thank you. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 19-0153R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Approved by Councilman Henry, and second by Councilman, Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
All the, all those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the calendar is approved. I'd like to recognize Councilman Dorsey.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of moving to second, short titles, say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and now, we will now move the bills on second reader. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 180288, York Road, York Corridor Business Improvement District Establishment.
I'd like to, Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee heard this bill on April 23rd, 2019. There are technical amendments on your desks. And I move the amendments.
Second by Council, Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, the bill is amended.
Madam President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, the bill is moved to third reader.
Madam President, I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move the City Council Bill 180288 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Councilman Henry. The ayes ha-
Call for roll call.
Um, I want to call for a roll call.
President Middleton.
Yes.
We can't hear you in the mic.
Aye.
President Middleton votes, um, yes. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen votes yes. Councilman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Scott votes yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey votes yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry votes yes. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Schleifer votes yes. Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett votes yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett votes yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock votes yes. Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger votes yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Costello votes yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes votes yes. Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed votes yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark votes yes. That's-
Fourteen yeses.
The ayes have it. The motion carries, and, and Council Bill 18-0288 is on third reader.
City Council Bill 180295, Baltimore City Landmark List Exteriors Hanlon Park.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee heard this bill on April 23rd, 2019. There are technical amendments on your desks. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, the bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 180298, Franchise Twenty-Six-Inch OHP Gas Main Granite Pipeline Through the Lands of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to postpone City Council Bill 180298 into the next meeting of the City Council on May 6th.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor of postponing this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill will appear second reader at the May 6th City Council meeting.
Thank you, Madam President.
Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 190357, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System, Interest, Service Credits, Death Benefits, Direct Deposit, and Technical Corrections.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee heard this bill on April 25th, 2019. The committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill with a favorable report.
Second from Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, the bill is moved to third reader. Third reader requiring invocation of Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement.
City Council Bill 180288, York Corridor Business Improvement District Establishment. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Committee announcements by any council member? Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. The Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on May 9th at 5:00 PM for the gender-inclusive single-use restrooms legislation. Thank you.
Okay. Regular- Regular announcements. Councilman Ryssinger, please honor a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting of the Shabbat synagogue in Poway, California. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark for a regular announcement.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Very timely, because what I would like to do, if I may, is just read from the message that was circulated by the Baltimore Jewish Council and the Associated on the synagogue shooting near San Diego. I'll quote from it briefly, but I thought the words very important on this occasion. "Our hearts are broken to learn of today's shooting in the midst of Shabbat services at the Shabbat of Poway synagogue near San Diego. This attack on a Jewish community during prayer on the final day of the Passover holiday, apparently motivated by anti-Semitism, and on the six-month anniversary of the shooting in Pittsburgh, is the latest example of a horrifying act of violence on a place of worship. The Baltimore Jewish Council and the Associated thank our partners in federal, state, and local law enforcement, as well as our federal, state, and local elected officials, for joining us in their collective commitment to ensuring the safety of our communities. Their response to today's shooting was immediate and appreciated. Hate has no place in our society, here in San Diego, in Sri Lanka, in New Zealand, in South Carolina, in Pittsburgh, or anywhere in the world. We join in mourning and praying for the victims, and we are more committed than ever to working to ensure that people of all faiths are safe in their synagogues, churches, mosques, and other places of worship. We pledge to continue to combat anti-Semitism, as well as all other acts and words of hate." Thank you.
If you also noticed, in the chambers, we have some wonderful ladies from the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority that have been working here in City Hall all day today, and they're blue and white. Could the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority please stand, and thank you so much for the work that you do in our community throughout the city. And we also have their brother sorority Phi Beta Sigma also here. Thank you. Thank you all for the wonderful work that you continue to do in the communities throughout the city of Baltimore. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members of the council. Again, we've been talking a lot around gun violence across the country, but clearly it's something that we deal with here in Baltimore City. And unfortunately, we had a tragic incident yesterday, and it happened within the Ninth City Council District. Some of you heard about the shooting of eight people at Edmondson and Whitmore yesterday on the 2500 block of Edmondson. I speak about it not only because it was a tragic incident where eight people were shot and one person died, but also it's personal, in the sense that not only is it a district that I represent, but it's also a neighborhood that I call home. Many of you know that prior to being a member of the council, I was president of the Evergreen Protective Association, and that falls right within the borders there, and having a home several blocks away does hit home. And so, we know that this is also affecting our young people, it's affecting our seniors, it's also affecting our institutions, be it the neighborhoods, associations, or churches. Some of you may remember that just a couple weeks ago, we had Reverend Mason from Perkins Square Baptist Church in these chambers doing the invocation, and the shooting happened right adjacent to his church. And so, we want to keep that community lifted up in prayer. We definitely want to make sure that we are paying attention to some of the trauma that's happening within our communities. I have been in communication with Western District Police, and they've been gathering information regarding the shooting. But again, I know Mr. Mayor also mentioned, again, the importance of when people seeing something, they need to say something, and us sharing information, because this affects all of us. It's not just about West Baltimore or that neighborhood, but it's about all of us being affected by it. And the fact that this is happening on a Sunday afternoon where people are trying to enjoy some community time is really a tragic event, but also it could shine a light on what we need to be doing as a community to remain vigilant about these issues, but to also reach out to our community. So in the next few days and weeks, please keep this at the forefront of our minds, and keep working together as a community to make sure that things like this don't happen, but we continue to lift up the communities in prayer and thought. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock, for those words. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I solemnly rise to ask that Councilman Ryssinger, honor a moment of silence for the now 91 victims of homicide that we have lost this year in the city of Baltimore, in addition to those that we have lost to the continuing opioid crisis. And then, I want to also remind everyone that this past weekend, we lost another young man. Mr. Dix was murdered in northeast Baltimore, literally on the border between Councilman Dorsey and my district. And this is a young man, I actually spoke at his high school graduation. You guys know Jordan, the intern's in my office, when he's not away at college, they were high school classmates. And when you have something like that happen, and you can directly see how it impacts not just the young people, but the teachers at the school and the community, it makes it hit home again that this disease of gun violence is spreading and impacting way too many of us, and that we have to get serious about tackling it. And to that end, I also rise to remind members of the council and the listening public that tomorrow at 5 o'clock, the City Council Public Safety Committee will be holding its monthly oversight hearing with the Baltimore Police Department, and it will be followed by a budget committee hearing with the Baltimore Police Department led by Councilman Costello. Thank you.
And the Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise just to remind my co-sponsors of the resolution supporting the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund and the ACLU. We will be doing a press conference on the passage of that resolution immediately following tonight's meeting, right here in the lobby outside the chambers. For those of you who are not staying for that press conference, please be aware that we will be having a press conference in the lobby immediately following the council meeting. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Scott, in mourning the loss of Kivon Dix, who was killed in my district. I also want to, you know, it's just such a reminder that these things are so close to all of us, and I appreciate Councilman Scott and others continuing to put at the forefront the loss of life from the opioid crisis. It's not something I talk a whole lot about, but I do bring it up from time to time in hearings, particularly when we're before the Health Department, and I think that it's not news to most people, but you know, I'm a recovered alcoholic and a former drug user, and I think it's important for people to know that there is hope and help available, you know, and in relation to these things continuing to hit hard and close to home. I've been sober since I was 21 years old. It was a pretty ugly sight prior to that. I'm 37 years old. I've been sober for 16 years now, and people who I used drugs with continue to die. I spent the, you know, several of my formative years, my freshman, my sophomore, my junior year of high school, basically using drugs whenever I could. And primarily, that was with two individuals who grew up in the neighborhoods around me, and one of them is dead this week. Because addiction takes people's lives all around us, this thing does not play, it does not discriminate, as we say, from Park Avenue to Park Bench, from Yale to jail. This thing is coming for you. It doesn't care where you come from, what you've done. The disease of alcoholism and addiction is insidious, and I don't think that I know anybody in Baltimore who hasn't seen somebody or known somebody directly close to them that's been touched by it. So I want to thank you for my colleagues continuing and to keep this in the forefront of our minds.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for your testimony. And before I call Councilman Costello, I do want to recognize the President and CEO, Donald Frye of the Greater Baltimore Committee, has visited our council meeting today. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Rodney Orange. Rodney was the executive director of the Arena Players, which is the oldest continuously-operating black community theater in the entire country. He was the executive director there for over 30 years, and his passing at a very young age from heart disease at the age of 58 has particularly hit the Arena Players family, as well as the Seton Hill community in the 11th District, very hard. So I'd ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Orange.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ryssinger.
Madam President, first of all, I want to wish you a happy birthday, which is May the 1st.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Madam President. Happy birthday to you.
And many, and many more.
So, Madam President, and my members of the council, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, May 6, 5:00 PM in the council chambers. I ask a moment of silence for the shooting victims at Shabbat synagogue in Poway, California. Also, the 91 homicides in Baltimore City, Rodney Orange and Kivon Dix.
Thank you. There being no more business, this concludes the 58th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council.